Good morning. It's Wednesday, March 9th, 2016, and we're in the Senator Hearing Room in Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we've got a stormy day coming. You ready for afternoon winds? I don't think this meeting will be too stormy, but you never know. And let's get right into it. Our first item is always a public comment. And we do have someone, David Beam, if you'd go over and tell us what you'd like, please.
Commissioners, my name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for special needs population in Salem. And I urge everybody in the Salem area, come to State Fair, and all the businesses in the city of Salem and the different towns, come to Salem and look at the State Fair, because it would be good for Oregon, and it will raise more money, and get more people will come in the city of Salem. And I urge all the disability people to come for the State Fair and businesses in Salem area.
All right.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, thank you, David, and also thank you for coming to the Marion County Fair meeting, too, which is on the State Fair.
Yes, I've been coming. I just missed one because I was sick. I didn't want to come because I don't want to give nobody my code.
All right, well, that's great, but thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. All right, there's no choice but you, Commissioner, to read the consent calendar, so if you would.
First and last choice. All right, so, Mr. Chair, I would...
Excuse me.
Sorry, I was looking at the comment right now.
Yes, would you, okay, go ahead, please, excuse me.
That's all right, sure.
Sorry, you came in late, and we didn't have any other signups, but go ahead if you'd introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Damian Hall. I am an attorney. I represent Saturn Solar, the applicant, in a conditional use...
They can't speak in public comment on a land use case.
I will scrupulously avoid talking about the specifics. I'd just like to talk about process and asking for additional time to hold a hearing, to get prepared for a hearing.
This matter has been scheduled for a hearing, as I understand it.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to talk about, is just the schedule.
Mr. Chair, this matter has been scheduled for a hearing, as I understand it, for next week, and it wouldn't be appropriate for the Board to receive information and testimony, or I shouldn't say testimony, but comment about a matter that is, will be heard by you next week.
And I certainly will not comment about the matter. I'm just here to ask for more time.
Okay, David, no, thank you. We've got your information, and know that you'd like to have a change of date, and we'll make that decision.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair, Darren, we've given the Board the information about the schedule and the legal issues around the schedule, so they know about it. You don't need to talk about it.
We would just request that no hearing be held on the 16th, and that it be rescheduled. That's the long and short of the request.
This is not the appropriate place to make that request.
And when can we expect a response to that?
That matter's not before the Board for today. The Board set, this agenda has been set for today, and it's not, the Board is not deciding that now.
Okay, I know, I understand, but when can, when can we expect to hear from that, and from whom, and that type of thing?
Bruce, will you look into that and get back to them with our decision as soon as possible? And that's as far as I'll go.
I think Scott Norris is sitting right here, and he sent us an email yesterday with the legalities of it. So, Scott, maybe if you and he can go out in the foyer and have a conversation, that would be ideal. All right, thank you.
All right, David, please. Just trying to follow the rules. Okay, Commissioner, on consent calendar again, please.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar. Under Health, we have a proven order of reappointing Patrick Vance as the Chair of the Health Advisory Board, with a term ending January 31st, 2020. Under Legal Counsel, a proven order appointing Harrison Conley and Roy Daniel as Marion County Hearings Officers. Under Public Works, receive a hearings officer's decision approving conditional use CU Case Number 15-039 Hockett, Clerk's File Number 5710, and schedule adoption of administrative ordinance granting zone change, ZC Case Number 15-003 Smith, Clerk's File Number 5709, for March 16th, 2016.
Okay, I'll second the motion to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Our first action item this morning is under Business Services. We consider approval of an order to adopt the animals in Marion County-owned or leased facilities policy. Colleen Coons-Chafin, and Bruce, your name's on here, too, so go ahead. Colleen, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Colleen Coons-Chafin is Business Services Director. This morning, I'm here to request your approval of a new policy, animals in county-owned and leased facilities. What you had before you were three documents, the policy, the procedure, and the exception form. The basis for this policy is to provide guidance and understanding for Marion County employees and clients with rules for animals in Marion County facilities. These procedures do not apply to county-owned or leased residential facilities where the county is a housing provider under the Fair Housing Act. The county will comply with the ADA, NFHA in those circumstances. This policy further defines animals as service animals and differentiates from working animals. Examples are the sheriffs, canines, or police canines, as well as dog shelters. Sometimes we have that happening. ADA defines animals, service animals, as dogs, miniature horses, and does not include other species of animals, whether wild or domestic, trained or untrained. The work or task performed by a service animal must be directly related to the individual's disability and answers two specific questions. Do you have the service animal due to a disability? And what work or task has the animal been trained to perform? Additionally, unauthorized animals are not permitted in county facilities or in any area within the workplace. That's cars, parking lots, and grounds. Requests for exceptions for this policy for employees, volunteers, and/or vendor service animals must be submitted on the request for exemption form and sent to the Business Services Department Director, who may approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove. Would you have any comments or questions?
For the record, Mr. Chair, Bruce Armstrong with Legal Counsel. What this policy does is it lines up Marion County's approach with the ADA, which there's been some swinging back and forth in terms of how service animals are dealt with. This policy lines us up with all the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. As Ms. Coons-Chafin has mentioned, there's an exception. This policy doesn't apply to resident, the very few residential facilities that the Health Department has, but it lays out that the Health Department, in those situations, if we are a residential provider, we're obligated to follow both the ADA and the Fair Housing Act, and we do, and we will. So, this doesn't necessarily apply to those situations, but it clarifies that. But it lines Marion County up with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and given some recent changes in the last few years, as the pendulum has swung back to having a more restrictive definition of what a service animal is.
I usually would let Commissioner go first, but I, and I know we've had a work session dealing with this, but I've just had a personal experience. And so, are these service animals, are they registered somewhere? Is there a definition of what constitutes? What happened on a plane, tight, you know how it is, three seats across, and I got the window, and the couple next to me have a little dog with a, not like dogs, but not on the plane, and it says, it's got a red vest with, it says comfort animal, and sitting right up front, and with that, is that a service animal?
It depends, but the other, there's two aspects of that. The airlines can make their own rules. They have to comply with the ADA, but they can be less, they can allow for more animals to be present.
Well, I guess I'm asking so...
But if it is, sorry to...
Sure, go ahead.
There is no certification requirement, and as Colleen mentioned, there are, if you're, if someone brings an animal into our facility and walks in the door, there are only two questions that can be asked, as Colleen mentioned. Does this animal help you? And, sorry, I'm not pulling up the questions straight away, but...
No, I'm, what the two questions are, does it help you, and what?
Is this animal required because of a disability? And what work or task has the animal been trained to perform to help you?
And relaxation and comfort, would or would not?
That, that doesn't define a disability.
Didn't seem like it. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I could, yes, we have had a number of discussions, and I really appreciate the responsiveness of Business Services to deal with the issue of how we dealt with housing for Health Department, and I think we've got a really good solution here. I was noticing, this is just a technical thing, there's still a little thing that says insert link for a form. I'm assuming that will be added in.
Yeah, that'll be added.
Once you have the link with the form.
Once I have your approval, it's linked in.
Right, okay, great, just wanted to make sure that somebody was aware of that. So, and Commissioner, just to talk about your issues, a couple of things. One is, my sister takes her dog on an airplane, and she doesn't have a disability, and it's a little dog, and she carries it in a case. A lot of people take animals on a plane, it's really up to the airlines, and it doesn't have anything to do with her, whether it's a service animal or comfort animal.
These people are trying to make that...
It's Riley, and you know, he's, she is a very cute dog, and very tiny.
There was no pit.
Fits under the seat in front of her. But anyway, so that's one thing. But the other thing is, there's a woman named Amy Sackett, and she used to work for Marion County, actually worked for Children and Families in the 1990s, and she is a client of some of our services, or has been, and has really made it her quest in life, her motivation, to do training around these service animals and comfort animals. She's created brochures that Legal Counsel has reviewed, and I think we have them out at the dog shelter. Her goal is that if you're a bona fide service animal, that you'd actually have an extra little tag on your collar of a particular color, so that people can kind of see right away. And so, there's actually, I think, a tag that Marion County was working on for service animals, and she does, she works with people and does training, and has really done a great job with it. And her motivation is kind of what you're saying, that if everybody just takes any animal and says, well, this is a service animal, right, then it really kind of denigrates the whole system of people that really need the service animals. And so, she's very precise about what the definitions are and what you need to do. So, if, you know, if we wanted her to come in and actually give us kind of a 101 at a management update meeting or whatever, I'm sure she would be happy to do that, if we want to get a little bit more information, but she does great work.
I have a sudden desire to bring my bad Bill and have her sit right down here, but neither of us would have comfort.
Right, right.
All right, anything else?
No, so with that, I will move approval of an order to adopt the animals in Marion County-owned or leased facilities policy.
I'll second the motion. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new policy on animals in Marion County. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Make the link. Our next item is under Public Works. We receive and consider appeal of a hearings officer's decision denying administrative review of 15033 Beal, that's Clerk's File, could be bail, I don't know, Clerk's File 5708. Joe Fenimore, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. I believe the name's pronounced Beal, by the way.
Pardon me?
I believe the name's pronounced Beal.
All right, thank you.
For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you is an administrative review to replace a dwelling that previously existed on a 10.75 acre parcel in the EFU Zone located on Ankey Hill Road in Jefferson. On the funding, they approved the application in October 2015. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on December 2nd, leaving the record open until the 16th, and on February 10th, the hearings officer issued a decision denying the request. That decision was appealed by the applicant on February 24th. Although the zone code contains provisions for replacement of dwellings in the EFU Zone, changes in state law supersede the zone code and must be applied directly until the code is updated. Under ORS 215-283-1P, the criteria for replacing a dwelling in the EFU Zone are subject to Section 2 of Chapter 462 of Oregon laws 2013. These criteria are listed in finding 10, beginning on page 4 of the decision. The hearings officer concluded in item 16 of the decision that there's no evidence in the record showing them removed dwelling, in this case, a mobile home, was assessed as a dwelling for the purposes of ad valorem taxation for the previous five years, five property tax years or less. In finding 17, the hearings officer concludes that there's no evidence of when, how, or whether the mobile home was removed from the tax rolls, or whether the county has stopped assessing it for tax purposes, and concludes that although the 2013 law may not take into account the unique characteristics of mobile home ownership, placement, and taxation, based on the evidence in the record, the criteria are not satisfied, and the home cannot be replaced. In the appeal, the applicants, through their attorney, proposed an alternative interpretation of criteria based on 2015 Luba case. Furthermore, they indicate that additional evidence has come to light that can be introduced if the appeal is accepted. The appeal concludes that the dwelling replacement criteria under their proposed interpretation can be satisfied, and the application should be approved. The Board has the following options: accept the appeal, remand the matter back to the hearings officer, requiring an agreement from the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline; accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing, the suggested hearing date is April 6th, 2016; deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. The 150-day decision-making deadline, in this case, is March 23rd. The applicant has agreed to an extension if the Board, if the appeal is accepted and the hearing is scheduled. Staff recommends the Board accept, accept the appeal and schedule the public hearing for April 6th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Well, first on the date, so, this particular hearing that we weren't supposed to be talking about today, if it were continued, what would, you had two dates that you gave us on email, was that the...
The target date at this point is April 27th.
Oh, so that's way down there.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about that. Okay.
For which hearing, Joe? This one, or...
No, for the one, the one next. If you continue the one next week, that is the suggested date.
All right.
All right, yeah, and April 6th should work for this one. Okay, so, got it. So, I'm supportive of accepting the appeal, but I had just a couple of questions when I was reading through this that I couldn't find. One is, who, what was the trigger for appealing it to the hearings officer in the first place?
One of the neighboring, the property is served by an easement. It goes past, through a neighbor's property, and they are afraid, they feel they will be adversely impacted by additional traffic if a home, if a home was built on this piece.
So, it was a neighbor that filed the appeal?
Yes.
All right. And then, and this is a technical question that perhaps you won't have an answer for right now, but, and we can get into it in the hearing, but aren't mobile homes taxed differently than stick-built homes? I mean, this is my recollection from my legislative days when I was working with mobile homes, and there was an allusion to the Department of Motor Vehicles, and that was my recollection as well. And so, I guess the question is, could a mobile home ever be taxed under an ad valorem, if you define what ad valorem is? And that was the question that was in my mind.
And I think that's the kind of issues that we need to talk about in the hearing. Yes, you are right, there are tax, they have been taxed different historically. The bill that went through the legislature in 2000, I think it was 2013, it came out, and it was very confusing, and it was an attempt to allow people in certain instances to replace houses that had been removed, but didn't speak specifically to mobile homes. So, they were kind of left out of that. Thousand Friends got involved, and wanted some siding standards, so, right now, if you have a home in the farm zone and you want to replace it, you can replace it anywhere on your property. But if it was a home that was previously, under the, under the previously removed provisions, then there's siding standards. It has to be where the old house used to be, or within certain parts of the property, they're less valuable for farming. So, that was, that was a trade-off to allow some, some of these dwellings that had been gone for a while to be replaced. As she said, it doesn't speak specifically to mobile homes, so that's kind of been open to interpretation.
It is a different taxation structure, right, than you would have?
Yes.
So, you have a piece of statute that's referring to one, just one type of home and not another?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Right, okay. All right.
I don't know if it's relevant or not, but my father was involved in something like this. Wasn't a mobile home, bought a site out of St. Paul to, wanted to build a house on, but there was, and the house had burned down. And there was some time limit that it had to be, some new construction had to be initiated. Is that part of this question?
It's similar, but it's not, it's not really part of it, because right now, when the code allows you a year to replace a house if it's unintentionally destroyed in the farm zone, regardless, outside of this process.
So, being removed is the same as destroyed, or not? Yeah, okay.
I don't think it is, but...
Joe, really, all I'm looking for when we, when we have these issues, I try to be supportive on everything, but, and I know there's, people apparently have different views of what, what they want support on, but is there a path that we can get to and satisfy the desire of this appeal?
I believe that there may be an interpretation that we can get there, yes.
Yeah, I just don't want to just be wasting people's time and just present a process where there's no hope of a result.
In addition, this will give the hearings officer and staff direction also for future cases that are similar to this. That's, that's, that's one of the, one of the reasons I recommended that you receive, that you...
Okay.
And one of the reasons we accept appeals is because we can interpret, and the hearings officer is more stuck with the...
Correct.
...clear letter of the law.
Yes.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we both receive and accept the appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying administrative review AR 15-033 Beal, Clerk's File Number 5708.
All right, I'll second the motion.
And schedule, and schedule a public hearing.
Oh, and schedule a public hearing for April 6th, 2016.
I agree with that, too, certainly. All right, any other discussion?
Schedule a hearing, sorry.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, call a question, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Joe. Final matter this morning, also under Public Works. We consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation in the amount of $127,677 to initiate Phase 1 of the Federal Ferry Boat Program project. And Steve Pressler is here, and if you'd like to begin, go ahead.
Okay. Chair, Steve Pressler, Public Works, Project Engineer, Federal Aid Projects. This is a, Marion County operates two ferries, the Buena Vista Ferry that connects Marion County and Pope County, and then the Wheatland Ferry that connects Marion County and Yamhill County on Wheatland Road. These ferries are eligible for federal funds. Federal funds accumulate through these two ferries, and as they build up, we're able to do projects such as these. Back in May of 2015, you heard, you approved an IGA that covered all three phases. Subsequent to that, entering into that IGA, ODOT determined that because of the federal environmental process, they needed to subdivide these projects so that we could order the parts separately and not be tied up in the environmental process for the entire three phases before ordering anything. So, what they produced was this IGA covering just Phase 1 that includes ordering parts, doing some specialty services like marine welding, installing overhead cable, things like that. So, this is, this is, this will be a fairly quick phase. There won't be an extensive environmental process. I doubt there'll be really any environmental process. It's pretty much just ordering parts and installing.
Steve, I'm having a little trouble hearing, if a little bit closer, if you would.
Oh, sorry. It, it'll just involve ordering parts and installing them, and a couple of specialty services. Subsequent to this one, you'll be seeing a second and third phase. The second phase will be installing signs throughout the county that'll let people know if the ferries are open or closed, and then constructing a catwalk on one of the towers at the Wheatland Ferry. Phase 3 will be extending some ramps, paving a parking lot, and doing a couple of other things. We, we will receive 127,000 in federal funds for this project. The total phase cost is 159,596, and they're allowing us to soft-match county personnel time. So, putting together the procurements, having our crews install items, hopefully will offset our hard costs. Entering into this agreement will not directly impact any other departments. The project will benefit the public at large by improving the operations of both ferries. So, the options for consideration are to approve and sign the IGA between ODOT and Marion County, or take no action, and if you take no action, the, we cannot move forward. Public Works recommends the Commissioner approve and sign the IGA. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. You've been very thorough in the description of it. It sounds like it's pretty straightforward, so I guess the only thing we're looking for is the boat ramp, which would be probably Phase 4, right?
We are extending the ramps with Phase 3.
No, actually, we're looking for a boat ramp for constituents, right? And we've had some discussions with Allen, there may be some property available, is what we heard, so...
Maybe you could do both in the same spot.
So, kind of keep that in mind.
Steve, I did have a couple of questions. Wanted to not clear, we must be near time, or did you say when this next Coast Guard inspection needs to be done? That five years must be about...
Yes. What we're hoping to do is get this money approved, and then order our haul-out system, which is an inflatable rubber ladder. If we get this approved and get our, get our go-ahead, we'll order that, and then be able to do that haul-out in May, I believe.
All right, I'm just thinking, I envisioned that you have a spot that you'd drag it up on the beach, but that isn't the case, really?
Well, I think, I think that is the case. It is Buena Vista, so I think we're going to have to drag it a little bit farther than we do the Wheatland.
But you're talking about a flotation that just lifts it up, and part of this is to look at hull inspection, so you, I assume, have to be able to get up underneath it to see that.
Yeah.
So, it has to be up, out of the water.
Yeah.
So, number two, this equipment procedure will work for both ferries?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. I, well, seem to be the only one that was concerned with the locks at Oregon City. We hear different things. Maybe this is the answer to that, with them closing and how we can't get to Portland anymore. But then I hear that isn't critical, so I assume this is the answer to that, to have those inspections, perhaps do repairs at site without having to take the boat up to Portland.
Right, yeah, we can, we can take them out of the water, we do the Coast Guard inspection, address any deficiencies, and back they go.
Great. I don't see anything to be opposed to.
Yep. A great ferry. So, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation in the amount of $127,677 to initiate Phase 1 of the Federal Ferry Boat Program project.
All right, and I'll second it. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Steve, and good luck on the project. All right, that's the last item we have on the agenda this morning, other than to read the places we'll be together in the next week. We start out right away at noon, and we'll make it easily. County Community Forum with Woodburn Chamber of Commerce, that'll be at Country Meadows Village, 155 South Evergreen Road in Woodburn. That's noon to 1:30. Thursday, Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North, Kaiser, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. That's followed at 9:30 with a one-on-one Department-Hitting-Elected Official Meeting with Walt Beglar District Attorney. That'll be in Silverton Conference Room here at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 4 o'clock on the 10th with a one-on-one with Rod Cockens, our Health Department Director, and that'll also be in the Silverton Conference Room here in Courthouse Square. And at 6:30 to 7:30, we go to Jefferson for County Community Forum and Public Safety Town Hall. Maybe we'll take a minute to describe that when we get done here, with the Jefferson City Council. That'll be at Jefferson City Hall, 150 North Second and Jefferson. We're busy with these. Friday, the 11th, 11:45 to 1:00, County Community Forum with Silverton Chamber of Commerce and Silverton Hospital, 342 Fairview Street in Salem. And I hope I can make this on the 13th, Saturday, 11:30 to 2:00, Scotts Mills Annual Ham Dinner, Scotts Mills Grange, 299 Fourth Street in Scotts Mills. Monday, 8 o'clock to 3:00, Associated Oregon County Steering Legislative Committee and Board Meeting, Local Government Center, 1201 Center Street Northeast in Salem. On the 15th, Tuesday, 9:00 to 10:30, a work session having to do with coordinated care organization accomplishments. Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street in Salem. 3:15, 11:30 to 1:00, the community conversation with Kaiser at the Chamber, 6150 Ullali Drive, Northeast in Kaiser. Next Wednesday, 9 o'clock, our next regular board session here in the Senator Hearing Room, and followed by a French Prairie Forum at the Ochs U Extension Center, 15210 Miley Road in Aurora. That's from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock again on the 16th. So certainly busy, and we're going to be out in the community a whole bunch, but Jefferson's a little different than the rest, or?
Yeah, but let me just make sure. So the 3:13 is actually Sunday.
I thought that ought to be right.
So the date is correct, but the day is not correct.
I looked at that, they usually have a dinner on Sunday.
Right, yeah, so it's, so it is on March 13th, but March 13th is Sunday, not Saturday.
All right.
All right, so Jefferson, we are having a series of public safety forums. In fact, well, let me just back up. So when I assumed the Chair of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, we had a roundtable discussion, this was a year ago August, and I said to the group, so what are things that you've been doing as a public safety council that you like and are working? What are things that you haven't been doing that you'd like to do? And then we made a big list. And one of the things that came up that they liked, that they had done in the past, was having some community forums. And I think it was Ed McKinney that said that we wanted to get out and do the forums again.
They don't see Mount Angel listed, do they?
Right. And they had gone around and done some forums in the past and just gathered issues. So we put that on the chart. We spent a whole year doing the justice reinvestment plan, so we didn't really have time for community forums. And during that process also, Bob Royer, who's the Vice Chair, said, so when are we going to get community input on the justice reinvestment plan? And I said, well, we're doing these community forums, and it's such a technical plan. I mean, you're not going to go out and get people in the community to say, well, I think we really need to have evidence-based reach-in programs for, you know, I mean, it's, you know, that's not the kind of thing you get. And you don't want to go out and have a community forum and ask people for things, and then you don't use them, right? So we thought, rather than doing that, let's get the plan done, and then go out and talk about what the plan does, and answer people's questions, and get their input on the implementation of the plan, not putting the plan together. So after the plan was done, we talked about justice reinvestment, and then the council actually suggested that we do three other issues, one of them being emergency management, because of the big one coming up that everybody's concerned about, juvenile justice, Fay put that on the list, and then the homeless initiative, which kind of came out of the public safety council initially. So those are, so we've created flyers for those four issues. But the idea is that we're not going out to the community with a big PowerPoint presentation, dog and pony show, and talking about four issues. We just give them information and then ask, you know, do you have any questions about these, any thoughts about these, and what else is on your mind? So it's a very open kind of a thing. So the other thing that we did is that, you know, I've been to these community forums where you host, at a time of day, and it looks like this, right? You have a forum at seven-
And you can't count on you to ask a question.
Seven o'clock at night, and you come in, and there's like four people in the audience, and you have a nice conversation, and, you know, so, so we had more success with the state of the county when we go where people already are, Rotary Club meeting, or a chamber meeting, or whatever. So most of the time, we try to do that.
Kind of town hall format.
Yeah, so thinking about where people already would be. So we, for Salem and Kaiser, we thought, well, let's go to their neighborhood association. So we're having basically like 22 different community forums. I went to one, I've been to two now, so I went to one last night. And we have the public safety council members signing up, and we have 27 people on there, so everybody kind of takes one or two.
So you don't have to go to all of them?
Well, I'm going pretty much to all of them, yeah, because I'm coordinating them, so then they'll come along with me. And we just, you know, we just listened. Last night, there were three questions, and they were all about the homeless initiative, and that was about it. But at least you're getting out to a larger group of people around. We're going to do a telephone town hall on April 28th, and so that's going to be kind of fun. We did, the last time I did one of those was when we had that charter campaign, and we were over at the Chamber, and, you know, you kind of moderate it, and people will call in, and then their questions go up on a computer screen, and so then you can answer questions. And we'll have the sheriff and the DA and Fay and possibly Rod. I think we've got, you know, a group of about five or six people that can all answer questions, and so we'll farm the different questions out. So we figured that kind of covers the Salem-Kaiser area. But for the outlying areas, we combined our public safety forum with our state of the county forum for both, I think, Mill City and for Jefferson, since that seemed to make sense to do that. We're not doing it for the ones where we're at the Chamber or the Rotary, like Silverton or State, and so we're going to have a separate town hall there and try to recruit people to come.
Why not do that? It seems, if you can accomplish both. And I'm, sorry, I hate to take you out with 26 different meetings. I know what that's like to do.
Yeah, well, we've already got them scheduled, and I think what we were thinking would be a broader, we'd do a broader set of cities, you know, so, and try to get the word out for it. So we've already got those planned. Hattesh is working on those.
All right.
So we've got Silverton, we've got a date, and we've got the hospital booked, and we've got State and Sublimity, and we're going to go to the golf club again, and, and so that, anyway, that's what we're, and then our French Prairie Forum would be North County, and then Patty's actually hosting us at the Woodburn Rotary for the Woodburn Forum.
All right.